Okay, we're gonna go live on Facebook.
All right, we should be live. We'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for July 19th, 2021. Councilmember Saunders will not be present tonight, and it looks like we may be having some live video issues on Facebook. Nonetheless, we are recording it on our server. With that, Councilmember Gardner will lead invocation and pledge.
Father God, we thank you so much for this evening, Lord, and we are thankful for the wonderful weather that we've had this past weekend with the rain that you blessed us with and the cooler temperatures, Father. And thank you so much for giving us this beautiful city of Maumell to live in, and tonight, as we talk about the city's issues, Father, we just pray that you'll grant us a measure of wisdom, that we can serve this city faithfully and do what's in her best interest, Lord. Thank you so much for all the things that you do for us in this city, Father, and thank you for the first responders that take care of us each and every day and all those that work for the city and take care of the city's needs, Father. We're thankful for the blessings that you give us in life, Father, and just help us to look for someone to serve each and every day. Christ in we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where each hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move on to special guests and announcements. The first item is Employee of the Month. The Employee of the Month for January is Kristi Grant. She was unable to make it again today, so I'm gonna go ahead and just read the proclamation. And it's a proclamation naming Kristi Grant as the Mayor's Employee of the Month for January 2021 and declaring July 23rd, 2021 to be Kristi Grant Day in the City of Maumell. Whereas Kristi Grant serves as receptionist for Maumell City Hall, assisting visitors by greeting, welcoming, and directing them appropriately, fielding phone calls, and ensuring smooth day-to-day operations. Whereas Ms. Grant began her career with the City of Maumell in 2013 and has faithfully served our community for the past eight years, assisting residents with questions and concerns and ensuring each issue is addressed and directed to the appropriate department. Whereas Ms. Grant has made adjustments throughout COVID-19 pandemic to accommodate social distancing guidelines and the changing needs and volume of visitors to City Hall. And whereas Ms. Grant has been instrumental in creating coordination and unity between different departments, fostering a more positive environment within City Hall. Now, therefore, I, Caleb Norris, Mayor of Maumell, do hereby declare Kristi Grant to be the Mayor's Employee of the Month for January 2021, and I hereby proclaim July 23rd, 2021 to be Kristi Grant Day in the City of Maumell. So if you see Kristi, please congratulate her. Everyone knows how different things have been over the last year as we have moved... What's that? Got you, yeah. As we have moved to the... Having... The Revenue Office up front has been quite an ordeal, and she's done a great job with that. Again, it looks like we're having live video problems where it's intermittently coming in and out. There's nothing I can do about it at the moment. So, but we are recording this and putting, and we can upload that to YouTube for anybody who's watching and probably not able to hear me right now. But nonetheless, be sure and congratulate Kristi when you see her. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes from July 6th. Y'all have received a copy of that in the council packet. If there's no discussion on that, I'd entertain a motion to adopt those minutes. I've got a motion second to adopt the minutes from July 6th, regular City Council meeting. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next order of business is public comment. I do have four public comment cards, and we'll just go down the list. They're all on issues not currently on the agenda, and so first up is Bob Osborne. Come on down, you're the first contestant. If you state your name, address for the record, and you have three minutes, sir.
I'm Bob Osborne, and I think I have addressed you before about Crystal Hill Road. And I'm going to pass my comments after reading the resolution that you entered into today. I was, I wanted to offer two solutions to the financial problem. One was the insurance that I had mentioned about maybe the firm that drew up the plans of the road. And the next was to borrow the money to proceed with the road and continue your lawsuit with the utility company. And sometime that will be resolved, hopefully after the road is built. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
The next item or the next individual would be Lori Osborne.
Did you say name and address?
Yes, please.
Lori Osborne, 115, I mean, 11511, Crystal Bay Circle, North Little Rock, 72113. And I think also, like as Bob said, seeing the resolution, if I understand it that we were just handed, that things will be cleared up pretty quickly with the Crystal Bay. It's Crystal Hill Road, and the work will continue. Is that what the resolution says?
We don't have a resolution currently on the agenda, but we anticipate asking the City Council to add that to the agenda.
So I think one of the issues that I have is that we need some road signs, we need to say the road is closed. FedEx will turn around if they go down, say, turn left on Countess Massey Road instead of going all the way down to the other way, then they, then they won't deliver the packages. Also, there's some big trucks that'll come partially down the road, and then they have to turn around because they don't know that they can't go down the road. So in the interim, while we're waiting until we get the project started again, we really need some clear identification that it's dangerous and that you shouldn't go down there and that you should turn around and find a different route. And then also show a different route or show a detour on how you can get to River Bend without going down the east side of the Crystal Hill Road. So I think that's all for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Jane Bathke. Hopefully, I didn't butcher that too bad.
Not too bad. Your old German name. Jane Bathke, 11525, Crystal Bay Circle. May I pass a picture around? And what I'd like to talk to you about is the Crystal Hill Road construction as well. We, as you know, 12 years ago, it was passed, and in all that time, we've been living with nothing but potholes and a terrible, terrible road. And that continues to this day, and we really need some help before construction begins again. We've been sitting with that war zone mess for several months now. And here's what I'd like to ask you to consider to have happen for our Crystal Hill Road. We need the signs, as Lori addressed. Road closed, no through traffic. We've got people speeding through there, semi-trucks speeding through there. And sometimes when the semi-trucks come, they decide, oops, can't go that way, and this is what happens and blocks the road. And they're pretty darn good drivers, and they usually make their way out of it, but it's, there's potential for terrible stuff there. So I suggest just past the Maumell Park on the river, put local traffic only, road closed, you know, make it clear to people. People can still go to the park. And then again, on Countess Massey Road from that way, people should not be using this road as their commuter road as they're so used to doing. We really need to have the two major culverts that crossed the road that happened because of construction. Right now, every time it rains, giant potholes. And then somebody comes in and puts really big rocks in to fill that. Well, that's not working either because windshields can get smashed. Lots of things can happen for that. We need that to be paved over on those two spots where the culverts are. There's potholes on the entire route, and they really need at least some filling, like any city streets are done. Just because we're under construction, it shouldn't be that we don't get our pothills filled. We have to drive like this all the time to get home now. I would ask for more construction cones and more orange fencing because we have pictures showing the ditch as it stands now. Looks like they're putting fantastic drainage in for the new road, but right now, the ditch is filled with muddy water. And it's a crumbling shoulder next to that. Nothing to stop people from going in there. I'm shocked that, you know, right now, there isn't a car sitting there, truly. And one other thing, if you could just send a few police once in a while to ask the folks, stop going through here. You got no business going through here. This is just so we can get home, and that's all we need it to be, not so you can get to work or anything else. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Janet Watkins.
I have some pictures I'd like for you to pass around. I'm Janet Watkins. I live at 11400 Crystal Hill Road, and I am a proud resident of Maumell. I am not in North Little Rock. I'm not in the county. I'm in Maumell. And we desperately need some help. You guys, the school buses are gonna be coming like three weeks from now. And this is a treacherous, horrible situation. I have, I'm caught in the middle. I can't go up toward fire security and get out of it. I can't go down Count Massey and get out of it because I'm right in the middle, and I have to get in and out. And at night, I will hardly go out because you can see there are places where the cones are all gone, the barriers will all gone. And there's four-foot drop-offs, and I don't know whose fault it is at this point. I almost don't care. We just need some relief temporarily. I did not know about the resolution with energy or any agreement or anything because I just found out about the meeting a couple hours ago. And so I don't know what's taking place. Maybe it's going to get resolved, but I know one thing, it's not gonna get resolved tomorrow. And guys, this has been shut down so long that there are weeds and bushes and shrubs taller than my head. And so it is, the signs are down. Every time it rains, I've tried to put them up myself. I can't. And the signs have not been, there has been no one out there. I've been talking with Mike in Public Works, and he has told me almost every day for two weeks, that we're on first-name basis now, that the construction people are gonna come out and try to make it better. I can't see to get out of my driveway. There's piles of gravel as tall as I am, and I can't see over them. So it's kind of like playing chicken. I just have to grit my teeth, shut my eyes, and go for it. And I don't know whether there's a car coming around those piles of gravel or not. So we just really need some help. If one of the policemen, and I know we don't have enough policemen, and I appreciate everything they do, if one patrolman would sit in my driveway from 11:30 till 12:30, they could probably give enough tickets and get enough revenue to operate the city for several days. And it doesn't take long, and after somebody puts it on Facebook, that they got a ticket for going down that closed road, and I think it would stop. My little pictures I put on Facebook have thinned out the traffic a great deal because people didn't have any idea they were driving on a road that one side of it is about to cave off. You can see from the ridiculous situation. Now that's, you have to get out of your car to see that. So it's gonna be a surprise to somebody. If they go by right behind one of those big semi-trucks that's going way too fast anyway, and they, that road caves off, they're gonna be with their nose down and their back of their car up. And one more thing, and then I'll sit down and, but there have been so many times. I am 74 years old, and I'm not a very good backer-upper. I'll just be real frank with you. I think I'm still a good driver, but I've never been very good backing up. And I have had to back up yards and yards because trucks come down that road, and a lot of them are big pickup trucks with big wheels that could pull over. I drive a little old Honda, and I can't pull over in that mess. But it's like a game of chicken, and they'll just force me right up to the, almost bumper to bumper, and then I have to be the one to back up because I'm not gonna pull over and risk getting in one of those ditches. And so it's, it's really, really seriously dangerous, and especially at night, you can't see. So anything y'all can do to give us some relief temporarily and then get this show back on the road. I mean, it's, whatever we have to do with the energy, I had suggested taking a chainsaw down there and moving those poles. But I'm not strong enough to do it anymore. There was a time when I could have, but I won't do that. But there's gotta be something between here and there to get it going again, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Watkins. All right, the next order of business is the Financial Statement Review. Liz, you're up.
Good evening. We are looking at our financial report summary for, as of June 30th of this year. So taking a look first, I still have that little note on that, on there about some of our year-over-year revenues. Haven't, I've been working on 18, so I haven't gone back and finished 20 yet. So it's a juggling act right this minute. Hopefully, I will get to it maybe before next month's report. Looking at our county millage tax, current year-to-date is $252,000. Ahead of budget year-to-date. We've talked about this, that trend of budget is gonna vary throughout the year because we get those big receipts in May and October. So it went way up, and we looked way over budget, and it's gonna kind of start tapering off, and then towards the end of the year, it'll even off for us. Franchise fees, current year-to-date is $25,000 behind budget year-to-date. Franchise fees are ups from the previous year, which may be some seasonality things going in there. I do know that the state's fiscal year ended June 30th, so July is typically when they're gonna kind of give any supplemental funds back over. We should see that hopefully coming this next month. So, and they've kind of talked about that last year when they pulled back on how much they were distributing. Sorry, that's on the state turnback funds. Franchise fees is seasonality, and that's where I was looking at previous year. And we're up from previous year. So that's just the cycle of weather and things like that with utility bills that are tied to those franchise fees. State turnback funds, there we go. They're year-to-date $38,000 behind the budget, and that's where we're hoping to see that increased distribution hopefully this month. County sales tax, current year-to-date, $454,000 ahead of budget year-to-date. This is amount, this for taxes collected on sales in April, collected by the state in May. And I've got some sales tax info in the back of the packet, so we'll talk a little bit more about that there. City sales tax, year-to-date is $151,000 behind budget year-to-date. And this represents taxes collected on, again, sales in April that we collected in May. Police Department, current year-to-date is $72,000 behind budget year-to-date, $12,000 more than the prior year. Those lot fee turnback funds, we'll see those in July. So again, we'll swing the other direction for a little while, and then we'll taper off towards the end of the year. Same thing in the Fire Department. Current year-to-date is $669,000 behind budget, and that's, that's not right. 606,000 dollars behind budget. There's a nine in there that's not supposed to be there. Sorry about that. 66,000, not 669,000. $30,000 more than the prior year. Parks and Recreation, current year-to-date is $4,000 ahead of budget and $80,000 more than the prior year. So we're seeing a good pickup back to better times. And our Parks and Rec Department, I'm sure Philip and his staff have been busy with pool and summer activities and everything going on there. Senior Wellness, current year-to-date is $35,000 behind budget year-to-date, $3,000 less than the prior year. They're monitoring their expenses kind of in line with that revenue, and right now, their expenses are exactly $35,000 under budget, too. So they're trending kind of flat for the year so far net. Miscellaneous income, largest budgeted item is gonna be that $646,000 transfer from the Capital Improvement Fund, which we will be recording in July. That transfer is budgeted is to fund the fire truck purchase, which is gonna be paid for in the next week. Our May sales tax reports were inadvertently provided in the council packet on July 6th instead of the most recent June receipts. So the end of your packet, you had the June sales tax receipts, which is what I had actually meant to give you last time we met. And I put some graphs on there, which we'll look at in a minute. Expenses in all departments except for Animal Control, Community and Economic Development, Planning and Permits, and Citywide Services remain at or below budget year-to-date. In Animal Control, it's related to maintenance and beaver control expenses that we had earlier in the year. And Community and Economic Development is the timing of some advertising and membership expenses. Permits is some annual software costs, and Citywide Services is also related to software expenses, membership fees, and our liability insurance. So these are all things that we kind of paid for early in the year in full, so we won't have more expenses in those areas for the year. But when you look at a budget year-to-date, they kind of look high. They're all under budget for the year. Overall, expenses are $414,000 under budget year-to-date and $40,000 less than the previous year. At our general fund balance, end of June, the fund balance was $22,000 under the required minimum balance. Current year revenues are $783,000 more than our expenses. We've still got some reconciliation work to complete before we can get that better picture. We moved a little bit here, about $11,000 from the prior month, so not a huge swing on that. Taking a look at our street fund, our current year-to-date on the county millage is $81,000 ahead of budget year-to-date. That's also one of those fun seasonal ones. And our state turnback funds are $56,000 ahead of budget year-to-date. On the expense side, both the Streets and Senior Services Transportation Department are still under budget year-to-date. And the current available street fund balance at the end of June is right at 4.7 million. And our sanitation fund, current year-to-date is about $8,000 ahead of budget year-to-date, and their expenses are $62,000 under budget and $23,000 less than the prior year. Personnel expenses are $68,000 under the budget and $51,000 more than the previous year. That variance over prior year on the personnel expenses, I think, has to do with that reclass that I did kind of mid-year last year. So it'll probably move a little bit as we move through the year. The current available sanitation fund balance at the end of, that says April, should say June, is $1.6 million. Police and Fire Fund transfers are still happening monthly. Current year receipts are $71,000 ahead of the budget year-to-date. And we haven't really had much movement on our FEMA grant in the last month, but we will kind of flip. If you're looking in your packet, you can flip to page 16. And these are the, I just kind of gave, I gave you your regular sales tax report that we usually look at, but I also gave you year-to-date for five years, the city sales tax and the county sales tax in a chart form just to kind of look at and see. I was kind of looking at trends, and you can see February every year is a spike. Well, that's when we receive it. That's actually for December sales, and we get it in, in February. And so you see that big spike there from Christmas and then, but overall, we have been increasing sales tax revenues little by little every year. So, and I apologize for giving you the wrong sales tax figures last month. We just got the file named wrong. Oh, and the other thing I was gonna just kind of give you guys an update on. 2018's annual comprehensive financial report should have it to the auditors in the next couple days. I'm finishing up the last couple pieces on the financial report there. We also have a whole supplementary section that the auditors don't review that has all the other fun info that I'll be working on while they're reviewing the financial report section. So, and then as soon as we can finish 18, we'll get 19's report going really quick right after that because they're mostly done with onsite audit work for 19 as well. So we should be able to progress pretty quickly into getting that one finished up.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, ma'am. As far as this 2018 that you're getting to the auditors, in other words, they're just gonna check your final numbers. They've signed off on all the numbers and everything, but they're gonna check and make sure it's, looks, looks all right from their standpoint.
Yeah, we got to a point in the audit where we were, you know, any, they, any adjustments or questions they had, we pretty much worked through all of that. So I had a trial balance that was, you know, we'd made adjusting entries to, and I actually provided all the adjustments. They didn't give me any. I gave them to them. But we, you know, were settled on that trial balance, and so now it's the actual financial reports, which they will take and, and audit and review to make sure that they're correctly presented.
Okay, and you're, you're working on a CAF, CAFRA report? Is that how you say it still?
We're not supposed to call it that anymore. So it used to be the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and now it's the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and does not have an acronym. But yes, that's what I'm working on. It's about a 90-page book. A section of that is the financial reports that the auditors audit and review and issue their opinion on. And so that's the part I'm almost done with to get to them.
And do I understand correctly that 2019 and beyond, we're not gonna go through the CAFRA thing? Is that correct?
At this point in time, we will be producing that report for 19 as well. One of our bonds requires that report. And so until we do some maneuvering to change from, it, it's possible that we can change the bond requirement, that they would be satisfied with an actual audit report and a certain section of the supplementary information that they're really interested in that we could just produce. But we'll have to kind of work through that. So as of right now, since that requirement hasn't been lifted, I'm currently planning on producing an annual financial report for 2019 as well.
Okay. Do you still, still foresee getting, getting 2019 and '20 audits out here in this calendar year?
Yes.
All righty. One other thing, about a month ago, I think I mentioned I wanted to see if we couldn't sit down and look at some detail on that one month adjustment that was a couple of months ago where it swung the balance into the red as far as what our minimum reserves are by $600,000 or whatever. And I was wanting to get with you and just kind of get whatever your, see your journal entries or whatever made up all that, as far as what expenses were not being done right or adjusted correctly. And I've wanted to offer anybody else a chance to sit in on that meeting. We could call it the financial, we've got a financial oversight committee that we had about three years ago. It's been dormant since then, we could call it that and call it a workshop. And just anybody else can sit in and visit and ask any questions they might have from a financial standpoint. Would anybody else like to do that? Okay, Mr. Holt, okay. All right, Mr. Tierney, all right. Well, we'll just, we'll go ahead and do that then. What I'd like to do is, Jess, you've got a work schedule. If you want to name a time, either in the evening or during the day that works for you, I'll make sure I'm available. In the evening, okay. How about, say, next Tuesday night, would that work for you? Let me check my calendar.
I'm leaving for our state GFOA conference Tuesday night.
Oh, is it? Okay. Well, why don't you, you name a time.
The following week is fine, the first week in August.
First week in August, okay. All right, how about, how about August 3rd, you want to shoot for that? Okay, just let me know if that didn't work. And how about 6 o'clock work for you, Jess? Okay. It's a Tuesday, August 3rd. All right, thank you. And it just, we'll visit beforehand, I'll tell you what I'm looking for and we can see what we can work out. But it's just, it's just kind of informal. All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, if there's no additional discussion, I'd entertain a motion to accept the financial report for June. I've got a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Next order of business is a procedural motion. I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion, second, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to new business, the first, or unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business is the third reading ordinance 1035, accepting dedication of streets and drainage. Madam City Clerk, Treasury, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1035, and ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets and drainage and the preliminary plat for the development known as Country Club of Arkansas, Phase 24C, upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. If there's no discussion, I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 1035. I've got a motion, second, is there any discussion on the motion, second, to accept ordinance 1035? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Mizony?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Shin?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes, ordinance 1035 is adopted. At this time, we move on to the second reading of ordinance 1036, establishing rights-of-way standards. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1036, and ordinance to establish standards and specification to administer and regulate the right-of-way in public interest and to provide for the issuance and regulation of the right-of-way permit.
Thank you, this is on second reading. If there's no discussion, it'll be on third reading at the next city council meeting. With that, we will move on to new business. As the first item of new business, I'd propose an amendment allowing Resolution 2021-18 to be added to the agenda. Resolution 2021-18 is a resolution that would authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Entergy to get the project moving on Crystal Hill as expeditiously as possible. And so I'd need a motion to amend the agenda to allow 2021-18 to be added to new business. I've got a motion, a second, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. With that, Madam City Clerk, if you could please read Resolution 2021-18 by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2021-18, approved in agreement to facilitate road widening between the City of Mammell and Entergy Arkansas LLC.
Thank you, so this is the resolution that would allow Entergy to proceed moving the power lines to begin... Begin that work contingent upon the city getting a letter of credit to cover the amount that's estimated to be owed. And then essentially what happens is the city and Entergy still argue over who's supposed to pay for it, but we both agree that no matter who's going to pay for it, we're going to start the relocation as soon as possible. We believe vegetation could, it's a little bit of a guesstimate, but it looks like the project can start moving forward again as early as next week with vegetation clearing and prepping the rights-of-way for the relocation of the poles. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple, well, one question, and this could be either for you or for the city attorney. I remember some discussion either at the previous meeting or the meeting before on the estimated cost. And this is the lowest number that I've seen. And that number seems like it's dropped multiple times since we first started discussing this. Are we fairly certain that this is a close estimate?
The, that is the estimate that we've been given. There was an estimate that was 100% cost, and I believe this was the 90% cost. So I think at the last meeting, these were the numbers that were presented. I've spoken with Entergy folks who have a few representatives here. They think the costs have gone up, but they're doing everything they can. They say they're doing everything they can to be able to honor this number, which was the 142 and some change.
Okay, and if it turns out that the city does pay for this, will this be a street resolution that you would anticipate, the street fund?
We will have to see, it may come out of the project funds or not. I'm presuming we'll proceed with the project and really have to look at whether we're going to value engineer down the project to some extent, whether the project's somehow coming in under budget and therefore frees up funds, or whether we have to come back to the city council with a street fund. My preference would not, would be to not have to come back and ask for street fund money. But if the value engineering is such that it strips out something that's critical to the project, I'd probably come back and to the council. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes. The item I was interested in is the same one that Mr. Gardner was, the estimated cost. I had understood up till now that that's the amount that they named that they were wanting to get from us to go ahead and relocate. And here it says estimated, so I'm the same way. I'm a little concerned as to whether this is the number or is this the number that they would want? If so, should it not just be hardcoded in here?
Is that it, Madam City Attorney?
I think in the environment that we're in right now, that assumes that we do it fairly quickly and there are no major cost changes as far as materials. So there is some allowance there in case, you know, the price of whatever materials that they're going to need to do the project would go up somewhat.
You're comfortable then that it would be very close to this number, is that correct?
Well, I mean, it, this is, you know, this assumes this is a good faith estimate, and it is the number that we've been given for a good period of time, so. You might ask their representatives.
Pardon me?
You might ask their representatives if they...
If they'd care to comment on that, that'd be great.
Mr. Johnson, if I could get you to come to the microphone, so everyone unable to watch the stream can... It's difficult to hear, thank you, sir.
Hey, no problem. Michael Johnson, 108 Ponca Drive, Mammell. We've been operating in good faith all along, Mr. Mosley. It can be classified as an estimate at this point because there are certain other contractors that we work with that provide us with cost estimates. And as their numbers change, we've got to be mindful of that. So time is of the essence, but the numbers that you do have right now, they should be hard numbers for you in which to operate in.
Thank you for your comment, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
How soon do you think the repairs and the work would start?
I tell you what, if you guys can kind of give us a little bit more indication, maybe tomorrow, we can work with the mayor and get you a timeline. Because I've got about three different departments that are working on this. And each day that we hold up the numbers that they need to work with as we work with other contractors and pricing cost issues, they kind of fluctuate, but we're in a good zone right now. So if we can kind of get some movement, I could probably have you an estimated timeline within, before this week is out.
Can you give me a ballpark with work might start though? I mean, are we talking about a couple of weeks, a couple of months?
No, sir, hopefully next week, weather holding next week. Our vegetation group, we've got clear indications that if we get some movement from the city, we could possibly have some crews lined up for you at the beginning of next week.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
That's very, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Tierney?
That was my question.
Outstanding. Councilmember Mizony?
Motion to approve?
I've got a motion to approve and a second. Is there any additional discussion on Resolution 2021-18? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those very adamant yes, all opposed, say no. Motion carries. We can get the resolution and agreement signed tomorrow. We started working on the letter of credit today. We're hoping we can get that letter of credit through the bank tomorrow, though that is obviously up to the bank. We started that process today, so I imagine we can get it tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest. So with that, the next order of business is the, thank you all for coming. The next order of business is the consolidation of departments. By now, the city council has received notice from Ms. Judy Keller, Director of Community and Economic Development, that she plans to retire effective October 1. What I am proposing is, currently, Community and Economic Development is a department that consists of one person. I'm asking the council to approve consolidating that department with the mayor's office. And then we would change the grade of that position down. Because currently, it's a department of one with its own separate budget. We think that we can be a little more efficient with some of those funds if we sort of consolidate them all together. So I'll basically just open the floor if there's any discussion, debate, or questions on that. And then if not, I'd entertain a motion to consolidate Community and Economic Development into the mayor's office effective October 1. I've got a motion, do I hear a second? I've got a motion, second, and at least one puzzled face out there. So I'm going to ask if there's any discussion, questions, comments, concerns. I'm happy to answer. Councilmember Mizony?
Just trying to think of the long term on this, because there's no doubt our economic development is probably our top priority, at least in my opinion. So we just also need a plan how to get the right person in here so we can work for that. So I don't see anything, it kind of makes sense, but just a lot to throw down.
A lot to throw down, yeah. So the council can always come back and re-add it as a department. I just, it, I remember talking to Judy back in early 2019 and saying that when... When she retires, that I would be looking at merging that into the mayor's office. We had a little while, you know, that department used to manage the website. It used to be handled, and there, there used to be an extra employee in that department. That employee in the management of the website has effectively moved from Community and Economic Development to the mayor's office. And the original purpose of the city's website, as I understand it, was to serve as, for economic development purposes. And so it started as an economic development website and then branched over to there. Yeah, so in fact, Tina would know more about that department's history over the last number of years than anyone else in the room, I'd wager to say.
That's correct. Initially, that web, the website was designed by some students at Uler, and it was for, used as a tool for economic development to try to retain and attract businesses. It has since evolved into a full website for the city as a whole. So the original reason it started is now a small component of something that's much bigger.
I think another reason, since no one's asking questions, and I'm sure at least one person has questions. I was talking to someone last week about this and mentioned that as mayor, I can see, if I so chose, every purchase that every department is making. However, I'm looking at purchase orders, which is your largest, your larger orders, and then anything with checks above $5,000, I sign those and look at those invoices. But short of that, the invoices and the purchasing decisions that I'm really drilling down on a monthly basis are those in the mayor's office? And I think that as Community and Economic Development continues to modernize, that it helps to have extra eyes in that, not that that is a necessary, that the merger is a necessary condition for that level of involvement out of the mayor's office, but just as a practical matter, it just sort of changes the routing of some of that stuff. I also think there's some overlap between communications, which is part of the mayor's office, and Community and Economic Development. And so that's that, but I won't continue to... I won't continue to talk at all, apparently. If there's no further discussion, then we have a motion and a second to consolidate the Department of Community and Economic Development.
Does my line not work?
Well, I've got an, just sound off. Yeah, Councilmember Williams?
This has happened more than once, though, I've noticed, so it might be...
So I, well, I switch between requests to speak and roll call. And so when more people are speaking up without pushing the button, I switch modes and that resets the push-to-talk button.
Well, I think, after all of that, I do think you answered my question. I was just asking, you know, I'm assuming that the mayor's office will just absorb the budget for economic development.
For the remainder of this year, yeah. Yes, and then effective next year, that would be the case. So I'll put it back in. Is there anyone else that had any discussion? All right, I've got a motion, second, to consolidate Community and Economic Development office into the mayor's office. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That concludes new business and on to... Motion carries. That concludes new business, and on to mayor's comments. I just wanted to talk a little bit. I sent you all an email about Central Arkansas Greenways, the regional Greenway Initiative going on by Metro Plan. Please, if you haven't taken the survey yet, the website to do so is centralarcgreenways.com. This is really gonna be important for the region as a whole, but specifically Mammell. So, just to recap, the idea is Metro Plan has set aside half of their transportation funds for the next decade to be dedicated toward a regional greenway system, which is very similar to, if you've been to Fayetteville, they've got the Razorback Greenway. Numerous other communities have something similar. It's, the, the regional greenway is broken up into different trails or corridors, if you will. So, the one that's currently moving forward is the Southwest Trail from Little Rock to Hot Springs, I believe, or Hot Springs Village. Right? Hot Springs. And that had been in the works prior to this initiative. The corridor that I think Mammell's most concerned with is the Northwest Corridor, and that's effectively going from North Little Rock to Greenbrier, sort of through Mammell, through Mayflower, Conway, Greenbrier, and it's supposed to extend up beyond that. And currently, we had a meeting last week, we had an interview, that Scott Grummer, Sarah Smith, and I attended with the consultants on that. And then, we both, or all three of us attended a regional brainstorming session, a multi-jurisdictional brainstorming session, that had the electeds from, the, the chief electeds from basically all the counties and cities in the, the Metro Plan members, focusing on not just how we're getting across the city, but how we're connecting, where we're connecting some of the big bottlenecks and, and the like. I think this will be really important. Please, if you haven't seen the, the survey, do that, provide input there and pass that out. And I've seen multiple folks sharing that on social media and the like. So, I just wanted to point that out. And that'll conclude mayor's comments, and we'll move on to councilmember comments. Councilmember Holt?
Just thought we ought to pay a word of congratulations and thank you to you, the mayor, and our city attorney for whoever broke the ice on all of this energy thing. You deserve a lot of credit, a lot of relief for everyone, and I think you should be congratulated and thanked for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'd echo that. I appreciate the stance you all took. I, I, I think that was the, the right way to proceed. Thank you. Also, I wanted to ask, I saw an article in the paper today or yesterday, talking about police car costs. And they were, they were interviewing somebody, it may have been North Little Rock or Little Rock, but they were saying that the cars were so expensive to try to get, get their hands on at those cities, that they were being told to just make do with those cars, and we're gonna repair them for a while. And I was wondering, you know, we've got a lease, leasing setup. Is that protecting us in this situation? Is that a fixed, fixed price to where, where we're not being, having to deal with those higher-priced cars?
The leasing, the vehicles that we've leased are, are locked in, yes. And I envision, or, and, so, so each year, over the five-year plan, the idea is to lease more vehicles each year. And then, at the end of five, the bulk of patrol is in leased vehicles. We may not be expanding that list for two thousand and twenty-two, meaning we may continue to lease the vehicles that are already being leased and are under a five-year lease agreement, but not add the next year. A lot of it'll just come down to budget, and of course, availability of vehicles right now is interesting.
Okay.
And I don't see Chief Pickard pounding down the door yet, so I don't know that he has anything to add.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Any additional councilmember comments? Madam City Attorney?
Just a couple. I mentioned the wage and hour trial that we had coming up next week. Unfortunately, there have been some attorneys involved that have had some quarantine issues. So, we're gonna move, that's already, we've had an order of continuance on that. So, that'll be actually at a later time. As far as the complaint that, that you all received and went out, I have drafted an answer to that, which I gave to the mayor on Friday. So, he's gonna be looking at that, and will, I'm sure, be making some revisions to it and all that. But it's due in August, but we're working on it to try to go ahead and get that taken care of.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
Just reminding you guys that we are accepting resumes to complete the remaining term of the open seat on the Planning Commission. I am accepting resumes until August sixth at four PM. It's to finish position number one, and that term ends in May of twenty-five. That's all I have.
Thank you. In closing, I'd just reiterate that it looks like we're having stream problems. Folks have said they haven't been able to hear us. It looks like we're putting out about fourteen frames per second and disconnecting every ten seconds or so. We have recordings. We'll work on getting that posted on the website and on Facebook tomorrow. If there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
Aboo.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Didn't think so. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. We return. Thank you very much.